Good afternoon, and welcome to the National Capital Planning Commission’s March 7, 2013 meeting. And if you would please, stand with me and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every being and justice.
Please note all in attendance that today’s proceedings are being livestreamed on the National Capital Planning Commission website. And also noting the presence of a quorum, we’ll go ahead and call the meeting to order and proceed with the agenda as has been public noticed. Agenda item number one is a report of the chairman, and I just want to make one comment that many of you, many commission members, and even some I know attending today, joined us Tuesday night, a couple nights ago, to attend the Heightened DC Conversations Panel. It was held at the National Archives, and the purpose of the meeting was to have a big conversation, to start a big conversation that we’re going to be having about the Height Act that has been governing over the district for about a century now. And we had assembled an international panel of experts who, in other major capital cities, Hamburg, it’s not a capital city, but well, it’s a provincial capital city, London as well. Those cities also have struggled over the years with height and what to do and how to, you know, what’s proper in those historic cities. So we had folks from there join us. They helped frame perhaps some of the discussion questions that we’ll be asking ourselves as we proceed with the Height Act study. We’re also happily joined by Congressman Darryl Isa of California, who is Chair of the House Oversight and Government Reform Committee, and who actually requested that Mayor Gray and I, the NCPC and the district government undertake this study. And of course, Mayor Gray and I happily accepted his request, and we’re moving forward. But he made one comment that evening, that his quote was, “It’s not about how high we go, but how well we go high.” And that is, that’s very good. So anyway, we have set up a special website at ncpc.gov/heightstudy. NCPC.gov/heightstudy. And there you will find all the PowerPoint presentations that were done by our experts from the other night. Video of the entire evening is posted, and other materials as well. And as this several month, or six-month study goes on, we will continue posting everything there, so that should be your central go-to place to follow our proceedings. With that, any, anyone else have anything to say who attended the panel this evening? Here we’re done. Agenda item number two is the report of the executive director, and sitting in for Mr. Costa today is Mr. Sox.
Mr. Chairman, and commission members, I only have one item to report. I wanted to report that next week, Wednesday, March 13th, NCPC will be hosting a brown bag featuring Camilla Wiene. The topic will be “Going Green in London.” She will discuss how London is developing and evaluating sustainable public realm projects. In terms of background, Ms. Wiene is the former architect for the Transport for London. She’s an author. She’s a Loeb Fellow and Chair of SpaceLink Learning Foundation. That concludes my report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Sox? Agenda item number three is a legislative update, and we have Ms. Skyler.
Mr. Chairman, I have nothing to report. There’s been no new actions.
Okay, thank you. Agenda item number four is the consent calendar, and we have two items. Agenda item number four A is a telecommunications facility modification at the Goddard Spaceflight Center. And agenda item number four B is the access control point at Fort Belvoir, the North Post Point. Are there any questions on those two consent calendar items? Hearing none, is there a motion on the consent calendar? It’s been moved and seconded. The consent calendar be approved? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. It’s approved. Then agenda item number five A, speaking of the Height Master Plan Study, we now have an information presentation on our work ahead on this study for Mr. Zaden.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good afternoon, commission members. This next agenda item, or the first one on your open session, is an information presentation regarding the congressionally requested Height Master Plan. This comes on the heels of Tuesday’s event at the National Archives, which the chairman just discussed, which was very well-attended, and we want to express our appreciation for everyone who attended that event, and that the featured speakers really helped us begin to start thinking about how to really approach this very important study. So this presentation is going to talk about some background of how this study came to be, how we’re approaching it, coordination, and then public outreach, which is going to be a very important piece of the work. Just to give some background for those who are not familiar with the Height Act, it is technically called the Height of Buildings Act of 1910, of course passed and adopted by Congress in 1910. It applies citywide, so the regulations apply citywide from boundary to boundary, and it provides a maximum envelope by which buildings cannot exceed in the District of Columbia. The local zoning regulations are applicable as well, and can be, and oftentimes are, more restrictive, so, but this is basically the federal envelope and its regulations. Just to give an overview of how it works, the Height Act relates the height of buildings to the width of the street on which the building that it resides. In commercial areas, buildings cannot be taller than the width of the street plus 20 feet. In residential areas, buildings cannot be taller than the width of the street. So that bonus of 20 feet does not apply to residential areas. In terms of maximum heights, the Height Act establishes a maximum height of 130 feet in commercial areas and 90 feet in residential. The only area of exception to this rule is on the north side of Pennsylvania Avenue between the White House and the Capitol, where buildings can exceed, or can go up to 160 feet. So there is a special area along the north side of Pennsylvania Avenue.
Mr. Zaden, what was the exception? Do you know what the history is of that Pennsylvania Avenue exception?
Sure. In looking at the legislative history, when the original Height Act was being discussed, the Willard was already built, and the Willard is at 160 feet, and so the general, and there was a lot of discussion, and the legislative history of the Height Act is pretty fascinating, but the general thought was, since the Willard was already 160 feet, to maintain that profile along the north side of Pennsylvania Avenue. Okay, so there’s been a lot of discussion about the Height Act over the years, but this discussion has become much more formal over the past year. On July 19th of 2012, the Committee on Oversight and Government Reform convened a hearing to discuss the Height Act. That hearing was entitled “Changes to the Height Act: Shaping Washington, D.C. for the Future.” There were several people who testified, two of which was Marcela Costa, our Executive Director, and Harriet Tregone from the District of Columbia Office of Planning. Following that hearing, there was a letter that was received from the House Committee Chairman, Congressman Darryl Isa, who, as the chairman said, was at the event on Tuesday. And this letter requested a study of the Height Act so that the Congress can evaluate the act and its applicability. Following that, in November of 2012, there was a response from NCPC Chairman Bryant and District of Columbia Mayor Gray, accepting that request to do a joint study of the Height Act. So to talk about these, both of these letters, both from Congressman Isa and as well as the response letters, really kind of set some parameters on how the study should move forward, and I’m going to discuss that for a little bit now. In the letter from Congressman Isa, the congressman said that NCPC should work jointly with the District of Columbia in assessing the Height Act, and to make a determination on how the Height Act serves federal and local interests, and how changes to the law could affect the future of the city. The letter also discussed the need to carefully study the effect that height changes could have on the historic Longfond City. It noted the importance of the iconic historic skyline, and the visual preeminence of the U.S. Capitol and related national monuments. The letter stressed how these important things should be protected and retained. The study also suggested the encouraging of strategic areas to the law in those areas outside of the Longfond City, and then also noting the importance of understanding local economic development goals, impact on federal interests, compatibility to the surrounding neighborhoods, national security concerns, and of course, input from local residents. So this was kind of the foundation by which we’re approaching the study. In response, both Chairman Bryant and Mayor Gray reiterated some really agreed-upon important principles that are in line with some of the things that were discussed in the letter from the congressman. First is to ensure the prominence of federal landmarks and monuments by preserving views to them and their settings, to maintain the horizontality of the existing monumental city skyline, and also to minimize the impacts to nationally significant historic resources, including the Longfond Plan. So these are, again, reiteration of some core principles that the study should take into account. In all these communications, there was discussion of the Longfond City, and just to reiterate what we mean by that, the Longfond City is the historic core of Washington that was originally planned by Pierre Longfond in 1790. It is the only, well, it is one of the few urban plans that is on the National Register of Historic Preservation, and it is afforded federal protection that way. It also includes the Mall, the heart of the federal establishment, the US Capitol, the White House, and other historic properties, and a predominance of National Park Service properties. Okay, so to discuss the approach, we’re looking at approaching the study in three general phases. The first phase is to do background research and to further define federal and local interests. These principles that I’ve discussed kind of begin that conversation, but we want to understand more what the federal and local issues and interests are. We want to do some further exploration of how other cities have managed building height. I think the discussion on Tuesday was a good starting point for that. We also want to know how the Height Act has shaped Washington’s form, and the impacts it’s had on Washington’s form, and how that either should be retained or changed. In this phase, NCPC has retained some consulting services to assist with this phase of the study in doing some of this background research. In the second phase, we want to get into understanding what the opportunities are. What are the baseline areas of interest in the city? We want to map out what are some of the historic districts, what are areas of important interest that we just, that we will define in Phase One, and then from there, look at what areas of opportunity might there be to alter the Height Act to allow greater heights. Also, an important piece of this will be to understand what technical changes in the Height Act should be recommended. When I say technical changes, I’m referring to the language of the statute. The law is over 100 years old. Building technology has changed quite a bit since then, and it’s important to see if any language just needs to be updated to help clarify certain issues. In this phase, the District of Columbia has retained consulting services to assist with this phase of the study. This includes modeling, viewshed analysis, and construction feasibility to understand how additional height could be gained on existing buildings. And Phase Three will be the submission of recommendations to Congress and conclusion of the plan, and I’m going to discuss this in a little bit more detail because this is the phase where the draft plan will come to the commission for its consideration before it’s transmitted to Congress. So throughout the study, the commission will be briefed on each phase as we produce products and ideas. But in terms of process, this is a very unique situation in terms of doing a study like this. Congress has asked that the study be concluded by September, so it is somewhat of a tight timeframe. But the closest model in terms of process is the way we adopt the comprehensive plan in bringing drafts, draft ideas to the commission to be approved for release for public comment, getting that public comment, and then bringing them back for your consideration. So that is how we’re approaching that. So once we have a draft plan and its recommendations, we’ll bring that to the commission to authorize that for a public release for a 45-day comment period. We will hold hearings, multiple hearings, to receive public testimony on that draft study and its recommendations, and then we’ll bring the draft recommendations back to the commission for discussion, to consider some of the public input we’ve received, and then the commission can vote on those recommendations at a subsequent meeting, and then that will be transmitted to the U.S. Congress from there. So it’s a lot of work, but we think this is really important and a very important study, and the commission should get all the information that it can. In terms of coordination and outreach, we have formed a core working group, which is very similar to the Urban Design Task Force. It is a subset of this commission, which includes GSA, the Park Service, the District of Columbia, Department of Defense. We’ve also included the Architect of the Capitol and the Commission of Fine Arts in that group, and that’s going to really help us work with staff to drive the study forward. We want to hold facilitated discussions throughout the, throughout the study, and these will consist of discussions with federal, local, and civic stakeholder organizations to gather input. Those who want to be involved, we want to reach out to them. And then also, public events. We want to have significant public events at the conclusion of each phase of the study so that we can bring the work that we’ve developed to the public to get its input for us to consider as we move forward. In terms of schedule, again, Congress has asked that the study be concluded by September, so we’re looking at finishing the first phase and having public outreach by May of 2013, the second phase in June of 2013, and then bringing the products and the recommendations to the commission for its consideration by September. So tight timeframe, we’ve got a lot of work to do, but we think we can, we can move forward. We have already begun some outreach in addition to the event on Tuesday. As the chairman mentioned, we have our Height Master Plan website up, which is through our website at ncpc.gov, and people are able, the public is able to submit comments to us directly right now, and we certainly want to hear from everybody and understand what the, what the public input is, so. That concludes my presentation, so happy to answer any questions you may have.
Terrific. That is a lot of work to do in a relatively short period of time, and the public input will be necessary. We look forward to having a lot of, a lot of feedback. Questions or comments about Mr. Zaden’s presentation and our path forward?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Vixson.
Two things. One, first of all, three things. One, I think it was an excellent presentation, that which I couldn’t see from beginning to end. I was able to look at it on television with the, on the computer, I should say. So I think the staff did a great job, and all should be given kudos for that. Secondly, I hope that we will try to early get to the ANC commissioners, and not just do a, you know, a listserv and hope they show up, but maybe get proactive about getting collectively or, you know, locations where we can get them together to talk about it, because I think it clearly, they should be in play. And thirdly, would like some focus on East of the River. We are one of the areas that has a lot of land available and some significant federal presence, and we could have some iconic buildings over there, maybe over top of Green Line Metro Station, that would be, have a lot of potential, maybe bridge over the Sutland Parkway and give the helicopters or something to fly over so they won’t go over my house. And that’s not, that’s aside. Also, because they’re supposed to follow the parkway, but they tend to go right over my house and jump up over top of Talbot Street, and my windows rattling, I got to cycle, a regular replacement process for windows to get shaken by them. You don’t have to tower to tell them to do that, but that’s an aside, I’m sorry. That is an aside. Also, I do know that this has been a part of discussion around the Congress Heights Metro Station, and the local community ANC commissioner has expressed some reserve about any aggressive heights, and the local councilperson, Councilman Barry, was on, I think, sort of the other side of the issue. I’m not going to speak for him, but apparently he thought about maybe something more like what we saw at the presentation last night, on the 5th. Some people still have some progressive thoughts, and he, but it was not, didn’t go, it didn’t go very, it didn’t go anywhere then. So I think if we get East of the River and ANC is involved, it may be some openings here for our community, since it, the federal government is a, is like the center and the heart of our communities, our city, but the outer skirts might be like, I don’t think we much further from the center of the city than Roslyn is, quite frankly, and they seem to have a lot of aggressiveness in their heights. I don’t want my, my house towered by things, but point made, one, just look at East of the River ANC commissioners, and again, I think it’s a great start, and there’s a short timetable, so, thank you.
Thank you. Other comments or questions, Ms. White?
Again, I agree, it’s a very aggressive timetable, but I’m curious, can you talk a little bit more about your public outreach beyond sort of the physical place that we’re in here in D.C. since it is the nation’s capital? I mean, what sorts of tools are you using to hear from voices around the country who care very deeply about what the Capitol represents to the nation? So I’m very curious, in this timeframe, I know it’s not going to be easy, but.
Well, it’s already, this issue has already received a lot of press on the national level, so I think that, that discussion is already, already happening. And we’re going to continue trying to reach out, I mean, obviously, we can’t, it’s, well, it’d be difficult to go out public meetings outside of D.C., you know, throughout the country, but we are working to get this out to the national press, and I think that’s one of the good things that our website is available for, is because people can chime in from wherever, there’s no, there’s no locational aspect of it. But I think we’re already, we’re relying on the national press to really pick up and start this conversation related to the, to the Height Act in D.C., and I think that’s already happened. So I think we’re going to be relying a lot on that.
Well, I’d love to talk to you further about maybe some tools, maybe doing electronic town halls, or, you know, those types of things, so it’s beyond just a conversation in the press, but maybe more direct interaction with, I don’t know, through some of the planning schools around the country, but it’s, it’s a fascinating topic for a lot of people. I’m already hearing a lot of feedback about it, so I think it’d be really interesting to see how we could broaden the conversation in a structured way.
We’d love to hear those ideas, absolutely.
Go to your website.
Okay. Mr. Wells?
And then I think also, in areas east of the river and elsewhere, where we’ll be looking in terms of the Height Act, and I’m sure you’ll do this, but how important it is to show good design, that it’s not just taking a, you know, a 200-foot building and putting it right up against the sidewalk, but how it can be stepped back, you know, after three stories or five stories. I think it’s really important to show how the density is presented, and how it can be, again, smart, attractive design as people look at it. Otherwise, all people think about is the height, and not how the massing works.
Okay. I think that was definitely reiterated.
Mr. Chairman, I also want to mention, I noticed that the presenters were all European, and I did share with the staff, and I thought it was circulated, the, there’s a very wonderful development in Japan, where they have the kind of topography that we have east of the river, that’s been, just what Tommy talked about, properly integrated, and it’s, it’s a very wonderful, wonderful, wonderful structure. I don’t know whether that book got passed around, but maybe needs to get passed around to commissioners, too, that shows you how they use that area effectively.
Thank you. Ms. Greenwald?
I was also going to suggest online town halls. I would assume there are some folks in the administration that still know how to do those, but I wanted to go back, the core working group membership, I didn’t catch all of the members, if you wouldn’t mind just repeating that.
Okay, yeah, it’s the General Services Administration, and again, this is not a formalized group, but it’s just more of those that we deal with on a day-to-day through the commission. So it’s the General Services Administration, DOD, the National Park Service, Commission of Fine Arts, Architect of the Capitol, and then that’s kind of the core group, and then we’re looking, we’ll be reaching out to Department of Homeland Security, Capitol Police has already been involved, and others. I mean, that’ll be part of the facilitated discussions, the broader federal group as well.
Okay, I think that would be great, because I, I don’t know that DOD has the largest presence within the district, not that they don’t have a, say, in sort of the general landscape of the area. And also going back, this is a, we can talk more about this as we get closer, but you sort of alluded to the fact that there are some technical changes that might be necessary to the Height Act that go beyond the pure height restrictions. Can you, and it, you imply there’s some ambiguity perhaps in what that statute meant and how it’s been applied at the local level. Can you, just maybe give an example of that?
Well, I think, and I’m not, I’m not presuming what the study may conclude, so I’ll give that caveat, but you know, this commission oftentimes, as an example, struggles with things such as occupied space above the limits of height. You know, 1910, nobody had the presumption that there’d be swimming pools and things like that on tops of buildings. Now there are, so when you have changing rooms or things like that on, on tops of buildings, how does that apply, how does that, the language in the Height Act talks about occupied space, how does that all kind of apply together? So I mean, that’s, that’s one example. There are also sustainability measures that have, have come with building technology these days that the Height Act is, the language is unclear about. So it’s just more clarifying some of those things in the Height Act as it relates to building technology.
Okay, that’s helpful, thank you.
Mr. Provencia.
Appreciate the presentation. Also appreciate the receptivity of the commissioner from the D.C. Planning Office. We’re, I think, getting closer and closer to consensus on the scope, the interpretation, the definitions. Well, there’s some guidance in Congressman Isa’s, Isa’s letter about, that defines some parameters for us. There’s nothing that would prevent us from using this study as a launching point, as a foundation for further studies and analysis. We realize that, like most things, this is a challenge for many folks, but it also presents tremendous opportunities for the city, particularly as we look at things, the, the focus is on local and federal interests. We’ve thrown a little bit of a curve in that we’ve come up with a new concept of national interests that, that we’re in the process of defining. But I think we’re very encouraged at, while we have a tight timeline, and it’ll be tough to meet that and present the study the deliverable that’s expected. I think it’s a, it’s a wonderful joint initiative that we can ultimately hopefully be very proud of.
Thank you. I think that concludes, comments and questions. Thank you, Mr. Zaden, very much, and we look forward to working with you as we go Agenda item number five B is site improvements and perimeter security plan at the Department of Agriculture for their People’s Garden. We have Ms. Kelly.
Good afternoon. The United States Department of Agriculture is here to present their People’s Garden Initiative at their Headquarters Building in Washington, D.C. The People’s Garden Initiative, which I’m sure USDA will explain better than I, is an educational program that brings people to the food they eat, as well as demonstrates sustainable practices, and the USDA proposes to use both their Witten Building and their Agricultural South Building for demonstration purposes. So here you can see the location of the Witten Building and the Agricultural South Building. It’s located along a main gateway into the city, along 14th Street. The Witten Building is a unique building as it is a federal office building on the Mall. It also houses the Secretary of Agriculture, so a cabinet-level position located on the Mall. So the site improvements will occur to both the Witten and Agricultural South Buildings. As part of this project, the USDA is also looking to integrate perimeter security into the Witten Building. Last time the commission saw perimeter security here was in 2004, which you can see the plan on, on the screen. This was a concept design at that time, and it has not moved forward since then. And as part of this project, the USDA, they have decided not to move forward with perimeter security at the remainder of their buildings, other than a few guard booth improvements on C Street at the Agricultural South Building. So you can just see here in 2004, the proposed location of perimeter security at the Witten Building. It was mainly bollards in these locations, and since then, USDA has met with staff and, as well as other stakeholders, to evaluate this location, as well as, has ideas on how to change the materials, other than using bollards, throughout the whole Witten Building complex. So I’ll just invite USDA up here to show what they are proposing for concept design. This is an information presentation. USDA will be back, hopefully in May, for comments on the concept design for, for the commission.
Good afternoon. I’m Bob Snikus, the National Landscape Architect for the USDA’s Natural Resources Conservation Service, and on the People’s Garden team, and we’re here today to give you a quick briefing of what our plans are, are coming to. Let’s see. We’ll go with a quick introduction, explain the existing conditions around our two buildings, talk about the concept design, and then we’ll take any questions or comments. We’ve been working on this over 10 years, as Cheryl mentioned. We were here before you with a perimeter security concept design submission back in 2004. We also did the security environmental assessment at the time. It was tentatively approved and with a five-year beginning of construction. However, Congress did not fund us, so we did not, we did not renew it, and it did expire after the five-year permit. In 2008, we held a design charrette, where we invited many of the local designs, designers from federal and local agencies to join us for a day to help us think about what to do to our landscape and buildings to make them much more sustainable. We were suffering enormous overages in utility bills, water bills, maintenance expenses. We wanted to reduce those. It was a very successful event and sparked this very project. In 2009, Secretary Vilsec, formerly- In 2009, Secretary Vilsack formally establishes the People's Garden Initiative at an event in front of the Witten Building. In 2010, we began internal work preparing a master plan based on many of those charrette ideas. But due to the increasing scope of the project, the complexity, and actually the sheer excitement that we had internally and from our federal partners in watching what we were doing, we decided to hire a design firm, OLBN and their partners. So in 2011, the People's Garden Site Improvements and Perimeter Security Project began. We stuck with these guiding principles. Since we are the only cabinet-level department on the Mall and hadn't addressed security in the past, we were able to work with your staff and essentially rethink the security plan with a risk-based approach. So just the Witten Building gets 11 for perimeter security, and then, as Cheryl mentioned, the select entry courts to the South Building. We wanted to be sustainable and demonstrate a broad variety of sustainable practices that puts USDA in compliance with the executive orders on restoring and protecting the Chesapeake Bay and for federal leadership in environment, energy, and economic performance. We want to be in compliance with the Commemorative Works Act and to honor the legacy of our historic Olmsted-designed landscape. And we need to tell the story of USDA and American agriculture by becoming an integral part of the Mall experience. In February 2009, in a fitting tribute to Lincoln's 200th birthday, Secretary Vilsack launched the People's Garden Initiative. He dedicated our USDA site, landscapes, and food plots as the People's Garden, not just a garden. He inspired all of our USDA offices worldwide to plant one or build one. Fast forward four years, so if you look at our, the People's Garden website or our blogs, you'll see that there's more than 1,800 affiliated gardens now and over 1,000 partnering organizations and schools. And those food gardens alone have donated over 3 million pounds of fresh produce. So these gardens, landscapes, and green building features have to have three common components. They must be collaborative, they must benefit the community, and they must incorporate sustainable practices. So the plan you're about to see illustrates a modern security plan that's integrated with landscape elements to visualize, minimize visual impact. We want to save money, reduce the physical, physical impacts also. We want to employ sustainable practices such as improving stormwater management with below-grade harvesting systems. We're very interested in seeking District of Columbia stormwater and impervious surface cost with, with a credit. We're very interested in the health of the urban forest, and we'll be removing our non-native plant material around the two buildings and supplementing it with native plants, add to the beauty of the Mall. And we are inspired by our site's history and the plans references, the plan will reference built and unbuilt elements of the Olmsted design that you'll see in a moment. So in closing, we want to recapture a small segment of the public educational programs and agricultural exhibits that we once had 100 years ago. We want to showcase our mission and the story of American agriculture on our site.
Good afternoon, everyone. I am Scott Paden. I'm an architect with OLBN and Director of Professional Services. I'm going to take you through the existing conditions at both the Witten and South Building. We'll start with a, a little bit of history for those of you who are not up to date. So USDA has a long and a very significant history on the National Mall. Beginning in 1856, which is your upper-right image, the Agricultural Division was established where the west wing of the National Gallery now stands. In 1863, up until 1910, which is your lower-left image, experimental gardens and an arboretum were established on the Witten grounds. Then in 1873, up until 1940, which is the upper-left image, greenhouses were constructed and maintained. And finally, in 1883, at the corner of B and 12th, now Independence and 12th, the USDA created a museum in that site. Now for a quick synopsis on both the Witten and the South Buildings. USDA's Witten Building, as mentioned earlier, is the only federal office building on the National Mall and the only cabinet-level building without perimeter security. It began in 1904 with the construction of the two wings, slightly odd in that we built the wings first and the center was left empty. That was due to funding at the time. And it was not until 1930 that the center block was completed. 1930 also saw the beginning of construction for the South Building, which then finished in 1936. And the two iconic bridges, which span Independence Avenue, were completed at the end of the South Building. And I believe this is the only federal building that exists on two sides of the street and also being connected, except for maybe Wilbur and Orville Wright, which are connected underneath 7th Street. Okay, now for the great find that traceries made, our architectural historians, they went up to the Olmsted Archives in New York, and that led them to find a number of really beautiful and informative drawings. What you see here are two drawings from 1931, well, three drawings, two, two on the upper panel. And those two images show designs for the front lawn with very detailed illustrations of the various trees and their sizes. I don't know if you can see it, but, let me see if I can get the mouse over here. It's not cooperating. But on the upper-right corner of the leftmost slide, the rightmost tree, there's a small dotted line which projects, which was Olmsted projecting the growth of the tree and the effect on the view corridor back to the Witten Building. So there were many, many images, I'm not sure in total, but very extensive studies of the landscape, most of which was executed, some of which was not. The lower-right image shows the ceremonial entry court, which is virtually intact except for a few alterations, and that is still used today by the secretary when he comes to the building. Okay. Now, a little bit of context within the city of Washington, within the district. We have an aerial view, the site in red, which Cheryl has already identified, so I won't belabor that. And this image, which we created, this figure graph, of gardens along Independence Avenue and the National Mall. This drawing was actually at the suggestion of the Commission of Fine Arts when we first presented informally to the agencies. Inclusive of USDA, there are 17 gardens, 10 of which are located between Jefferson Drive and Independence Avenue. There are an additional four gardens in the planning stages, as well as the Smithsonian's recent announcement to seek a new master plan for their South Campus, which begins with the Freer and extends to the Hirshhorn, our neighbors, if you will. Okay. This is our site. And I'll move quickly through this slide because we'll get back to it when we go over the design. The site is bounded by Jefferson Drive and C Street, 12th and 14th Streets. Olmsted's lawn to the north, along Jefferson, is altered, but we feel the intent of their work is still intact. The ceremonial entry court, as I mentioned earlier, remains. Surface parking bookends the Witten, both at 12th and 14th, and runs along Independence Avenue. So you have a total of five surface parking areas on that site. C Street, which is really the significant street on the South Block because of its width and the width of the sidewalks, in my mind, remains one of the most oppressive blocks in DC. There's really nothing much there to mitigate the, the somewhat fascist architecture, especially to the south side. Okay. Now, for the South Building. We're going to take you through a few key images of both the Witten Building and then the South Building. On the Witten Building, we're going to start center and work clockwise around the, the slides are oriented very close to where the photo was taken on the plan. So starting top center and moving clockwise, you see the approach to the entry and the ceremonial court from the Mall. Then there's a view to the, from the northeast corner at Jefferson Drive and 12th, and this shows you the present organic garden, which is now a certified organic garden, which takes three years before that can happen. We have two images along Independence and then up 14th Street and along Jefferson Drive. If you look at the lower right-hand image, you'll see the farmer's market, which operates Fridays through the summer, and then unbeknownst to me, moves inside for the rest of the year. So if you go in the South Building and you go along the northern corridor, you will find an interior farmer's market, also on Fridays, I believe. So, last but not least, the South Building. Starting again, top center, a view down Independence, looking east, with one of the massive arches connecting the two buildings. Then upper right, which is the metro entrance, and this is also the main entrance that is used today for both visitors and staff to come into the South Building, which was not the way the building was originally designed. There's a bike share along 12th Street, and then as you move down around, the second photograph, moving right to left, is that great view up C Street. And then one of the six entry courts with the current guard booths in lower left. And then again, C Street, and you can see there's sort of this collection of clunky circa 1970s planters with not very healthy trees in them. And then the next slide, which is, I think, the most interesting, this is the original entrance to USDA on 14th Street. And if you look at the building, the majority of the building is very sedate, but then once you get to the center section on 14th Street, it becomes much more in keeping with the Witten Building. And this was the ceremonial entrance to that structure. So, two more slides and I am done. First is a zoning diagram. When we started work on this 20-acre site, it was a lot to digest. There's an extensive amount of streetscape, and it's really two very different parcels, the South Building and the Witten Building. But we're asked to treat them as a single design. So this graphic divides the site into its various zones. You can see a dash line, a heavy dash line, running east-west and partially north-south, which is the boundary of the National Mall. So the Mall fronts the north of the Witten Building and also the west face. It should be noted that USDA sustainable initiatives are underway. There are a variety of green roofs, two enacted, one already in the planning stages, the certified organic garden, and the adjacent farmer's market. Okay. Last, before I turn it over to Shelley Wrench, our landscape architect, this is the hierarchy diagram from which we began our investigation into the design. And it's divided into three horizontal and two vertical sections. The uppermost to the north, the east-west areas are the national historic Mall landscape, then Independence Avenue, and to the south, C Street. Running east-west, we have 14th Street and 12th Street, 12th being what divides USDA, unfortunately, from the Smithsonian campus with the large opening over the 12th Street underpass, which I'm not sure really why that's there, other than to let rain in and flood the tunnel. So that's it. Shelley Wrench will take over next. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Scott. And good afternoon, everybody. I'm going to attempt to condense the program of this project into just a very few minutes. And the reason I say that is this is actually nine-tenths of a mile of streetscape in Washington, surrounding two major buildings, totally historic on the Mall. So the program's quite complex. This slide basically just identifies some of the program uses around the building and starts to discuss how we are thinking of this more as civic spaces surrounding the building and less as service spaces. And I'm essentially referring to a lot of the courts around the building. This is the overall design, and I'm going to break this down into its components. It's quite overwhelming as a whole, but our main goal is to create a design that's not only secure, but that is led by the design and is respecting the historic Mall and is not purely reactive as a design. This is talking about the existing security. There's actually very little existing security on the site. There's, in red, you see a few marks on this plan, there's a few controlled entry points, a couple of planters, and the guard booths on C Street and the red squares. So essentially, this site does not have a secure perimeter in the current time. The security plan, we've gone to great lengths to essentially think through how to program the civic spaces as a design, as the lead, and then allowing the security to fall within the design rather than define the design. So we've gone to great lengths to use all the site elements as hardened, secure elements, and we've gone to great lengths to avoid depending on bollards and planters for perimeter security. This slide starts to break down that line on the Witten Building, and rather than going to all the detail, the main thing is that we're thinking of a supplemental and primary line. And within the supplemental, we're considering the use of trees and other elements that actually, in combination, are security elements. And then the, the primary line, which is in red, is essentially a combination of all hardened elements and cable rail associated with some planting, hardened lights, streetlights, and bollards only where we absolutely could not come up with another solution because there simply wasn't any physical space. This is basically just illustrating the, the concept of the cable rail associated with planting, which has come into the Washington construct more recently. And this slide is really, we don't want to focus this conversation on parking because it's very easy to get caught there. But this project, being driven by sustainable concepts, we've actually reduced both the car, parking and the curb cuts by 29% in this design, concept design to date. I have checked the math, it's true, it's 29% both, and it's basically eliminating four curb cuts, which is significant. There's a huge number of curb cuts on Independence Avenue on the Witten Building block, and essentially not more than the program requires. So we consider that a great success. Another success that's kind of embedded into the concept plan to date is that currently there's only 1% of the paving on this site is permeable, and 1% is a pretty low number when you're trying to demonstrate sustainability. So as we've rethought all of the pardon courts, we've integrated different approaches to water harvesting and, and also within some of the new areas that we're talking about, reintroducing Olmsted walkways. So we've brought our, our previous paving from 1% up to 16%, and that's as low as it is because that's calculated based on the South Block and the Witten Block. Enhancement, we're essentially focusing very much on the Mall, but that, right now, if you look at the quality of the urban forest on the two USDA blocks... if you look at the quality of the urban forest on the two USDA blocks, it's predominated by exotic and declining plant material. So, there was a lot of good reason to suggest removing and rethinking quite a bit of the plant material, just based on essentially being close to death and from other areas of the world. So, this diagram, basically, the lavender is where the suggested trees would go, and the green are existing trees to remain, but you can start to see the pattern that the landscape is taking form. And I should say that the Mall side, the north of the Witten Building, is intentionally bilaterally balanced. There was, traceries probably found 50 drawings from Olmsted plans, sections, perspective sketches, very detailed studies that did not show absolute symmetry, but showed a very clear direction of balance on the Mall. And then, on C Street, where we have the sort of unrelenting precision of C Street, and we have a very wide sidewalk, our current concept shows 16 feet of walking surface. We have the ability to introduce a bio-swell with quite a few trees to bring some green into that streetscape. And then, the thought was is to integrate a sort of historically-inspired paving design, which has not been developed, it's just a concept, but it is on the heritage trail. So, the thought was is that this would be a great place to come with a docent and walk school kids and talk about the history of the Department of Agriculture as kind of a non-spatially-defining way to make that block interesting. And then, the current, this is an image of the proposed replacement guard booths for C Street. There's five of them. It's such an unrelenting pattern, there's, we didn't see any reason to vary the design. So, we're proposing to reintroduce five, but five that are actually secure guard booths as opposed to just spaces for guards to stand in. And then, I'm just going to go very quickly through some enlargements of these very important spaces. This is the ceremonial entry court between the Witten Building and Jefferson Drive Southwest, so this is on the Mall. And this is where the historic documentation was very, very clear. The existing configuration of the parking there is very close, with the exception of some turning radiuses that were shaved off to the historic. And so, the integration of perimeter security is probably the aspect of this that's introducing the most change, but we were very rigorous in staying close to the historic condition. In that particular area where you see the red lines, actually on the historic plan view of that area, the inset of the historic rail, open rail and wall section was on the very same plan. That actually was built on the south entrance of the Witten, but that detail is really what inspired some of the security enclosures that we're proposing to integrate around that ceremonial entrance. And then, moving clockwise around the building, the organic garden, which is on the corner of 12th Street and Jefferson Drive Southwest, the thought was is to set back a little bit from the edge of the Mall, introduce a sort of clean edge of lawn and some hedges. We're looking at the kind of brown boxes are the seasonal experimental planting sort of rotation, which is very consistent with the Mall, with the USDA's experimental gardens on the Mall from day one. And the thought is is that this whole plan integrates both seasonal and perennial harvestable plants. So, there's quite a few plants in this region that do grow perennially and are grown in agricultural industry that can be grown in downtown Washington, and can be harvested and can be donated to food banks. So, the thought was, rather than plant things that aren't productive, we'll try to do our best to plant things that are productive, and in this case, a blueberry hedge around the organic garden. And then, the biggest difference between the, well, essentially, it just organizes the current certified organic garden, and then the idea of continuing the use of the court as a Market Commons and providing some shade in between the two uses, but essentially connecting that whole block as an area that's highly focused on celebrating the mission of USDA, that side of the block, I should say. A couple of the structures in the organic garden include an arbor and a garden storage structure, primarily to make the program work. And both of those, you can see the little red diagram up in the upper right, both of those garden support structures would be hardened to function as part of the perimeter security plan in another way to avoid a large row of bollards. And I think I forgot to say it, but we actually reduced the number of overall bollards on the site by 83%, I believe, from 2004. And then, moving around to the courts on Independence Avenue, the first court, East Court, we're considering a civic space. It's facing due south, it gets great light, it has fabulous facades. The thought is this could be the banquet court, and it could be a great place that, after food is produced, there's the aspect of celebrating with the community and sharing the food. And the thought is that food trucks could come in here, perhaps on weekends. We're thinking of it really as a multi-purpose use, but a place that's basically designed to respect the building and be a positive place for people. And then, you see in the lower left a section, each of the courts, we've studied and analyzed different water harvesting techniques, and you can start to see one of those indicated there. And then, as I said, there's a lot to this project. The west court of the Witten Building at Independence Avenue, the thought is it would be an exhibit court, and there currently is a green roof on that mechanical building in the center. The service area to the right of the mechanical building is key, really the only service court on this building, so that would maintain that primary use. And then, on 14th Street, the west educational court, the thought is is that perhaps on off-hours or however it's programmed, it's a great, large hardened surface. It would have water harvesting integrated, but it may be a great place where there's educational or environmental education programs on the Mall. This might be a great place to take some of that foot traffic off the lawns of the Mall, because no matter how fully technically engineered lawn, it still is sensitive to heavy foot traffic, particularly when it's raining. This is an image of how we were approaching Independence Avenue. If you go out there now, it's actually kind of forlorn, almost all the trees are dead or declining. So, really, the thought is is give it back its boulevard character. Technically, there's ways to plant trees that we all know promote the trees maturing fully, so those sorts of details are integrated into this concept plan. So, this basically, the perspective just illustrates the thought that this is a very proud block of street, and we want to bring back the green. And then, this slide basically identifies the different areas I'm talking about, and we're terming this an outdoor agricultural museum because we really believe the mission of USDA can be reflected in all these outdoor spaces in a multitude of ways, largely because we can demonstrate sustainable practices by building them and continue what's been started on the corner of 12th and Jefferson Drive and the certified organic garden. And then, this is perspective of the, well, actually, the inset image on the lower right is, this is basically a walkthrough to give you a sense of the character of the concept that we're proposing. This would be an image looking onto the ceremonial court from the Mall, and you sort of see that, the darkest red dot, and you can see the sort of transparent rail and wall detail I mentioned in the previous slide. And then, the historic wall in the center would remain, but it would be hardened. And what we found through the traceries' research is that the narrow steps were aligning with 13th Street's sidewalks, which no longer exist. So, the thought is is to open up that, those stairs to be more inviting to the public to enter the garden. And then, this would be actually proposed as a new walkway. Traceries found probably six iterations of Olmsted's plans that had a walkway in this location, and we thought it was important that people could circulate around the building through the garden, and not only on the sidewalks on Jefferson Drive Southwest, where you're really much more in a vehicular realm. This element in the foreground would both be demonstrating water harvesting and would also be hardened as a perimeter security element. And then, moving towards the corner of 12th Street, showing basically the secured perimeter line on the right, but making it as invisible as possible. And then, kind of coming towards the corner of 12th Street, towards the organic garden. Through the organic garden, the idea is that there'd be enough area that people could really congregate and learn, but this is basically the experimental garden zone, so the actual plantings would change through the seasons. And then, this is another shot of, if anybody goes by there, that crepe myrtle's existing. We weren't suggesting that we were purist to the point that we're cutting down existing non-native trees that are great specimens. And that's also kind of interesting because most of the Olmsted trees are not native, but they're spectacular ginkgo trees that there's no way that anybody would take them down because they're not native. And you can start to see the Market Commons in the background through that transparent arbor. This is another shot through the arbor of the Market Commons. The idea is that this is a great example. There's a winery industry in Maryland and Virginia, and that could be demonstrated on the Mall as part of the, of part of the demonstration projects. And with that, that's like the quickest overview we could condense, but we're very happy to have any questions.
Thank you very much. I'm trying to remember, this USDA lies just outside of the Southwest ECA District, but it's very complementary to what's going on just a block or two.
And it's just across the street from the ECA District.
Right. Questions or comments on the, on the very exciting plan?
I would like to comment.
Ms. Wright? I'm sure you will.
Can we see the slide that shows the perimeter again?
Because I'm not clear on where you're going. I have several questions, and then I have some comments. Not on the South Building, just the Witten, if you have that. So, ready? Okay. I'm going to channel Harriet Tregoning and ask a question about why the perimeter is being run around on the west side of the building to protect the cars. These are all rhetorical questions, and I don't expect you to answer them, and just issues that I would like to raise. But my bigger, my, that's a sort of a sidelight. I think there's a lot to like about this plan, and it's very thoughtful and sensitive. And I'm, I don't know this for sure, but I can guess that you are, some of your decisions have been directed by your client about parking. But again, I'm going to channel Harriet. I don't get the, first of all, calling something a court does not undo the fact that it's a parking lot. I mean, it's putting lipstick on the proverbial pig, and making it impervious is really great, but it's still a parking lot 14, 16 hours a day, right? And it's got options to program, and that's nice, too. But I'm not really sure why, even though there's a tremendous improvement in the parking ratio, I guess, why, because the Department of Agriculture is very fortunate to be situated where it is and as close as it is to the metro, why it, this beautiful building turns its back, in effect, on Independence Avenue and presents a parking lot. You have no hope, no matter how many trees you put up there, of turning, I think you said, and I applaud the ambition, to create the character of a boulevard, but that ain't happening with parking lots all over in courts, parking courts. And so, I would urge the Department of Agriculture to rethink its parking strategy. I know I'm whistling in the wind, but I'm going to do it anyway. So, having said that, I got a couple of specific things. And so, my parking beef, I would wonder about, particularly about the parking on 14th Street too, because I suspect it probably at one time had some kind of a vehicular entrance there, yeah, that isn't a parking lot. I think it's great that you've been able to remove so many of the bollards. I would urge you to rethink the idea of using trees and to sort of, you know, it's the swags and jabo approach to perimeter security, which doesn't work very well when you have bushes that die and trees that aren't sustained. And GSA, we're the, we're really good at, or have been really good at designing landscapes that we can't maintain. So, I would keep that in mind. Plus, I just don't know that it makes sense to try and gussy up the perimeter security with vegetation in any case. And then, I had a question about the, about this, about the guard booth. You said something on C Street, which I agree is relentless. What were you saying? You said you wanted, you've redesigned them. There are five of them, and you want them to be more than, I didn't get that.
I think all I was suggesting is that the building has such an unrelenting precision and the rhythm of the facades that the five guard booths should be the same.
Oh, and right now, they're just kind of willy-nilly?
Well, right now, they're not secure booths. They're just boxes with glass, so the guards really have no protection. So, the idea is to actually put in real guard booths as opposed to, you know, areas to keep them out of the rain.
So, you're going to take the opportunity to redesign them?
Yes.
Yeah. So, what you showed us was just kind of a...
The proposed redesign.
Oh, it was.
It was on the right side. There was a photo of the existing guard booth that left, and the proposed was a rent room to the left.
Okay.
And just one other thought relative to the earlier comments is USDA has four full-time garden maintenance personnel, and the entire agency is focused on growing things. There's also 70 volunteers currently on this People's Garden, and the thought is is that once the People's Garden spreads across the site, that the volunteer group hopefully will grow. So, there is a dedication on this particular, within this agency, on this site to maintaining.
I'm sure that they will do a much better job than we are able to do on some of ours. I would urge you to rethink, though, using shrubbery to mask perimeter security, whether you can maintain it or not. I'm just, it just doesn't seem very honest, not in a, not in a character or not in integrity way, just, it's just...
And actually, in, aside from shrubs, the trees are actually in lieu of other perimeter security elements. So, we're talking about the use of trees as opposed to the use of another...
Yeah, and that I don't think you're going to get past. I know you're not Level 5, but I mean, that doesn't, trees do not, and I can tell you this with some authority, since my 17-year-old totaled her car on Sunday, trees give way. And I don't think that you will, fortunately, and I don't think that you will necessarily pass muster on a security front unless you've got some big honking trees. But I'm not a security expert. I just don't know that I would count on that as making it through the gauntlet. I just have one more thing to say, even though I sound like I don't like it, I think there's a lot to like about, particularly the Mall side of this plan. And I would also refer you to my office when you get further along because we have a signage program, and we are trying to take advantage of the fact that whenever people are touching the signage to replace them with a standard that we have established that NCPC and CFA have both approved. So, we're rolling that out, and we'll be happy to help you. And it can double... And it can double as a security element. Thank you.
That's great. Thank you.
A quick question. Ms. Kelly, does this constitute coming before us for conceptual?
No.
No? We're not there already? Okay.
They will come in May.
May, okay, that's fine. And second question is, you mentioned the guard booths. When you come in for a conceptual and such, is all of this going to come to us comprehensively, or is the garden plan going to come in, and the guard booths come in later?
No, comprehensively.
Comprehensive, good, great. Mr. May?
Thank you. I'll be very quick, because Ms. Wright covered all the ground very well, and I agree with just about everything she had to say. I wanted to underscore a couple of things. I think one of the awful things about the existing building is that parking, you have had it on the side of it, and the fact that so much of the grounds around the building itself are still being reserved for parking is not a very good situation. I understand how difficult it is to eliminate parking, but I have many battle scars from trying to do that in certain circumstances, and many more to come as well. But I think that the, just something to make the Independence Avenue side more attractive, more appealing, and fit better with the prominence of that avenue, I think, would be a big improvement. I would also agree that relying on trees in any form for a part of a security barrier, I'm not a security expert either, but I have seen things that have tested that, and fortunately, I do not have 17-year-olds who have driven into trees. My 18-year-olds don't even have their licenses, so I haven't experienced that personally. I hope I never do. But I've seen demonstrations that trees do not, would not pass muster for any kind of rated barrier. So now maybe you don't need a rated barrier, maybe you're, you know, you have other ways of handling it, or it's part of an overall mitigation. I mean, we have used trees or relied on the fact that there's a number of trees to reduce the need to provide a security barrier in certain circumstances. So if that's what you're trying to do, it may be, it may be an effective strategy, but again, you're not going to get a rated barrier out of that. And I just have one question for you. I assume that you're having discussions with Park Service staff, the National Mall staff, about this as well. Can you tell me who you've been talking to?
Scott, can you help me out? I don't recall the name of the person.
I think Leslie can.
Doug Jacobs with the Park Service.
Okay. I know Doug. He works for me. Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I could talk one second.
You need to go up there.
I'd be happy to come to you.
Please make it brief.
And we'll deal with this later in the concept phase, but the idea about these courts actually came from Mr. Lindstrom when we were before CFA. And the idea was that these courts become part of the outdoor museum and are fully programmed. And over time, then, because of the reality of parking, the cars are gone, and those remain as part of this outdoor museum. And we'll be back with further renderings that illustrate that much better. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. It's been a very, very good presentation.
One quick question, please, about the garden. I'm sensitive because of our field trip to the Eisenhower, to the, along the Maryland Avenue cartway. We were approached, I think, on one of those trips about the loss of a garden in that area. You talked about the explosion in the gardens, 1865, a thousand organizations. How about individuals, private individuals also going to be able to participate and enjoy and have plantings in these gardens?
I'll have to defer that to USDA. I'm not sure exactly what their plan is on the...
What's the current setup, and what's the projected setup?
You have to identify yourself, please.
I'm sorry, I'm Leslie Burks. I'm a project manager at NOSCA for the People's Gardens. And with respect to your question, currently, no. The public does not plant within the gardens. It's all USDA, our volunteers that Ms. Wright spoke of before, it's our 70 volunteers and our People's Garden staff.
However...
Understand that, and think that's unfortunate.
However, I'll go back to the courts. Education Court, Exhibition Court, Banquet Court. The intention is that they are programmed by USDA, but they are also available to the public for use. So, and this is in its fledgling stage, so there's no reason to say that at some point the 14th Street Court, the Educational Court, couldn't function more in a public outreach manner where people would come and plant and be part of something. But this is, this is the very beginning of this idea as a museum, and what we're trying to do is to provide the spaces and create the opportunities for USDA to have a robust program of education and outreach.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The last item on the agenda today is Agenda Item Number 5C, and it is Phase 2 of the Intelligence Community Campus in Bethesda, a project we know well. Mr. Detman, welcome.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the Commission. I'm here to introduce the last item on the agenda today, and staff will be briefing its comments before handing it over to the applicant. Today, we have an information presentation provided by the United States Army Corps of Engineers on its ongoing effort to renovate the south campus of the Intelligence Community Campus. What I'll do today is just reintroduce the commission to the site and its past actions, and then hand it over to the applicant. The project is located, as I said, in Bethesda, Maryland, along Sangamo Road, which you can see here, running, it actually runs north-south, past the site along the east side. The site has a history going back to the 1950s when development started on the site, and it has history in its role, sorry, the history of the site goes back to 1940s as the headquarters of the Defense Mapping Agency, and it has significance in its role in World War II. Over time, the site was developed pretty extensively, as you can see here. Formerly, it was the headquarters of the National Geospatial Agency until that agency moved down, moved its headquarters down to Fort Belvoir as part of the 2005 BRAC. This is just, again, another aerial photo showing the site and its adjacencies with Sangamo Road running along the east. Along the north-hand side, you have a private school, the Waldorf School, as well as a local park, and then some residential. To the east of the site across Sangamo Road, you have a fairly large retail complex along with some moderate density residential, and then to the south, some undeveloped property and additional residential. To the west is National Park Service land, sloping down towards the Seino Canal and then ultimately the Potomac River. This is an image taken from the approved master plan. The commission approved the master plan for this facility recently, back in 2012. This diagram shows the campus split up into two parts, which is, which correspond with the redevelopment of the site. Along the north side, the north campus improvements include the construction of a multi-level parking facility, as well as some vehicle inspection and some visitor control facilities out towards Sangamo Road. And then today, the applicant here is going to give you an update on its efforts to renovate the south campus and to solicit your feedback on the current architectural concept, and then provide some updates on its ongoing efforts related to stormwater on a site-by-site basis, as well as across the campus, and its efforts, and its continuing efforts for community outreach. As I said, the commission has some previous actions on this project. It has five outstanding, or five previous actions. The, as I said, the commission approved the master plan back in February of 2012, and then subsequent to the master plan approval, it reviewed the site and building plans for the Phase 1 North Campus build-out. With that, I will hand it over to Bobby Bourgeois with the Defense Intelligence Agency to continue with the information presentation.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission. As Shane's introduced me, I am Bobby Bourgeois. I'm a civil engineer at the Defense Intelligence Agency, and I'm the senior DIA person on-site responsible for this program. We're pleased to be back here again. It's been a while since our program has been before the commission. As Shane indicated, it was last July when we were last here. Mr. Mansman was here to discuss the PV array on the parking garage, as well as stormwater management associated with the north, with the north campus phase of our project, just to provide a little bit more detail on what the various phases of our program consist of. North Campus is the multi-level garage, it's phase of the project, as well as the Visitor Control Center and the Vehicle Inspection Station. It encompasses approximately 13 of our 30 acres of property. Also associated with North Campus, not only are we constructing the garage, but we're removing extensive surface parking and replacing that with pervious, pervious surface grasses and wooded areas. After we received approval in July, we began to focus our attention on the south campus phase of the project. South Campus includes the balance of the 30 acres, approximately 17 acres. It includes six existing buildings, six existing buildings, three of which, Abert Hall, the VCC, as well as Emory Building, we're going to demolish. We're also going to construct an infill building which will join the remaining three buildings and create a campus atmosphere as opposed to a collection of individual buildings. We will renovate the existing buildings to create Class A office space that is both efficient from the use of, so it's efficient in its use as office space and also energy-efficient. The first phase of the south campus project is the centrum, and that's what we will be discussing in more detail as we move forward. And again, the purpose for us being here today is to present the updated architectural vision for the campus and to receive your insight and impressions on that, on that architectural vision as we move forward with the design. I'll discuss the community engagement aspect of the program. I'll be followed by John Malloy. He's a project manager with the Corps of Engineers. He'll discuss the redevelopment process for the campus. He'll discuss our relationship with Whiting Turner Contracting Company, our design builder that was selected for the program. He'll be followed by Bill Baxley. He's an architect on the Whiting Turner design team, and he'll present the updated architectural vision. If you remember, the architectural vision of the campus as presented with the master plan was of a large monolithic structure, glass and steel structure, with landscaping that had trees of all the same species and nice neat rows. The architectural vision that Whiting Turner has presented is something that we at DIA are very pleased with. It's very different from what we had previously presented, and it takes into account the nature of the neighborhood, the surrounding areas, and provides a facility that is more respective of the size and scale of the neighborhood and uses materials that blend better with the neighborhood and the adjacent parklands. Again, all of us on our project team, while this vision is different from what we initially presented, it's something we are very pleased, pleased to have and pleased to be able to present. Community engagement has obviously been a major topic of discussion here before the commission over the past year, year and a half on this program. And it wasn't, community engagement wasn't always a positive topic for us. We had our challenges early in the program, but we've invested considerable effort in trying to turn that around and establish a positive relationship with the community, both community members, adjacent government agencies, including the Park Service. One of the early efforts taken to undertake this transformation and the relationship were a series of commitment letters drafted by Mr. Mansman to the community associations. These commitment letters addressed areas of significant concern to the community, forest conservation, the height, the size, the orientation of the parking garage, traffic in the area. A lot of these, some of these, some of these commitments are shown here as being completed. That's because as part of the north campus project, we have finalized the layout of the garage. We have addressed traffic concerns. We've become a member of the, or a party to, the Community Traffic Committee. Some of them, you can see, are still in progress because the campus is still under construction. Some of the closed items will reopen when we proceed with other projects on the campus. It's important to note that these commitment letters, while they were drafted to address specific concerns associated with the north campus project, they carry over to the south campus project. They were included in the RFP that was, that the Corps of Engineers issued, and the contract that was later awarded to Whiting Turner. Mr. Mansman has made clear to the community on several occasions, in August, in November, and then again in February, when we met with community leaders in the community, that his intent is that the commitments he made on north campus apply to south campus. As we worked with the community to develop a more positive relationship, there were a series of meetings, a variety of meetings, in which we became a party to, or we established in order to develop that positive communication. And community leaders' meetings were the ones we do fairly frequently because it's easier to get that smaller group of leaders to the campus and participate in a meeting. As we transitioned focus from north campus to south campus, we conducted a community leaders' meeting in August. During this meeting, we discussed how we were going to redevelop south campus, the phases, the projects that would be conducted from the centrum to the renovation of the other buildings to the future site work. We explained that. We also, we also discussed the concerns the community had regarding the redevelopment. One of the concerns was traffic, but the four other major topics of discussion that the community brought to us, and topics that have carried through through future meetings, were architecture, landscaping, stormwater management, and forest conservation. I mean, those are, in addition to traffic, those are the topics we use to frame our discussion with the community to ensure that we're communicating clearly with them and adequately addressing their concerns with the program. So following our August meeting with the community leaders, we awarded, the Corps of Engineers awarded the construction contract, the design-build contract for south campus to Whiting Turner. In November, we met again with the community leaders, and we presented some of the renderings you will see here today for south campus. We took the opportunity to present those renderings to the community leaders and show them that their concerns that they voiced to us in August are, in fact, met to a large degree in the architectural vision that Whiting Turner proposed. After that meeting, we made the renderings that we had presented, we made those available to the community on the Army Corps' project website. It's a website that we use regularly to communicate the renderings for the campus, community updates, as well, you know, statuses, the status of the project. Following that November 8th meeting, we conducted a larger community meeting at the Washington Waldorf School in February. That February 7th meeting followed much the same format as the November 8th meeting and follows a similar format to this meeting. The intent of that meeting was that while the community had access to the renderings, to stand before them with our project team, both DIA, the Corps of Engineers, and the Whiting Turner Design Team, and present the same information to the community as a whole. We had approximately 60 members of the community attend that meeting. We made the presentation, we had time for 20 to 25 minutes of questions and answers, and the question-and-answer session actually extended beyond the hour meeting we held for another about 15 minutes. So we did have some good dialogue with the community, and it was, I think, a positive and important step for our team as we move towards submitting our concept plan to the commission later this spring. Traffic committee meetings and stormwater management document review sessions is also something we have been a party of, and we've taken advantage of over the past nine months in order to continue to engage with the community. The traffic committee is a committee established by the community. They meet on a monthly basis. Some months, there are issues, there may not be issues to discuss, so the meetings are deferred till the following month. But this is a meeting where we can talk with the community, provide updates on construction that will impact traffic. We try and keep them informed to the extent that we can so that we alleviate some of the friction in our relationship. I mean, it's also, it's a great forum for us. It's a standing meeting, it's a great forum for us to communicate with the community and have them ask questions in a face-to-face format and get answers in a face-to-face format. The stormwater management document review sessions that are indicated here, there's only two listed, but we've conducted, we've held many more review sessions than that, many more review sessions than are indicated here. These indicate formal standing meetings that we've established effective this year for the community to come to the site and review the documents. But through, through the last year, from July through the end of the year, we invited the community to the campus multiple times a month. the community to the campus multiple times a month to sit down and review stormwater management documents that we had submitted to the MDE. These documents are all available to the community at MDE offices, but in an, in an attempt to demonstrate transparency to the community and foster the positive dialogue with the community, we made these documents available to the community at our site.
What kind of response have you been getting to the turnout?
Oh, we've had a good response. There's been between six and eight community members that visit the site during these sessions to review the documents.
Thank you.
Some of these sessions are not only review sessions, but we do take the time when we can, or when there are significant issues that need to be addressed in person to meet with the community. The February fourteenth meeting, for example, I'll be able to, we'll have the documents available to the community for a period of four hours, and I'll spend the first hour talking with the community, explaining how some of the initiatives we have on the overall project address the elements of the commitment letters that Mr. Manselman had previously drafted.
And what times are these meetings typically?
Usually in the afternoon from one to four. What we've tried to establish over the past couple of weeks, and we've worked with David Berg and other community members, to establish a standing monthly meeting so there's no scheduling conflicts. That may make it challenging for them to review. We've, we initially established the second Monday of each month as a review session, but through some coordination with the, the committee, we've changed that to the second Thursday of the month from one to four. While we have a standing meeting, we will accommodate additional review sessions as required. Submissions to MDE don't always go on schedule, and the last thing we want to do is have a review session on a Thursday, submit to MDE on a Friday, and not have, provide the community an opportunity to review those documents at our site for another month. So we will work with the community to, to make these documents available outside of these standing meetings. And again, to highlight, engagement to the community, engagement with the community happens at these meetings, but it also happens through emails, through posts to the Corps website. That's a great place for us to post briefings, the, the presentation that we've made to the community on February seventh. The Corps posted that presentation on the, the website. The renderings that we had presented in November, the Corps posted those on the website. So the community had access to those renderings to discuss with the community groups during their community association meetings. We also try, I have a pretty good list of email addresses for community members, and I use that list of email addresses to notify community members of the community meetings or, for the case of North Campus, when we started to transition work from excavation to erection of the, the garage, use that email address list to let them know that there was a change in activity coming and that there was going to be a difference in the, the, the construction traffic activity on that road. Again, I mean, community engagement is something we've, we've learned a lot about it over the last year on this program, and we take it serious. Mr. Manselman, OD and I leadership takes it seriously, and it's something that we're committed to, to continuing throughout the duration of the project. At this time, I'll be followed by John Malloy. He'll discuss the redevelopment process for the campus.
Good afternoon. I just wanted to expand and give you a little bit more background on how we arrived at getting Whiting Turner on board with us quickly on the contractual side. So as you're aware, North Campus, we had a single award contract to Clark Construction, who, that project is now underway. And after that, we focused, as Bobby said, on the South Campus and the redevelopment of the buildings there. So we, at the Corps, we decided that the best way to approach this is to put out for request proposals for a single award task order construction contract, which allows us to design and build a project in different phases as we, as, as the customer needs seats and as the different buildings are revamped and upgraded and, again, construction-wise, redoing the buildings and then backing out of the site and greening up the site and leaving the whole project in a much greener fashion. So we put out an RFP, and as Bobby said, we, we had those commitment letters. Those were actually part of the, the RFP process, request for proposal process. So all the bidders were fully aware of the customers, of the owner's intent and his commitment to the community, and that was all well documented. We also put lots of verbiage in the RFP to include the importance of the greening of the site and the, the natural grade down to the Potomac and the CNO canal and the federal presence. So we put a lot of that language in the RFP so the designers or the bidders would know where we were coming from. So with that response, we went through and, and received several bids, and Whiting Turner was the awarded contractor in their design-build team. And as Bobby said, their, their proposed layout was much more befitting the community compared to the glass structure that we had originally intended. So that was the awarded contractor. The benefits of getting a single contractor on site now, we, we always knew that North Campus getting that garage would be one of the critical elements to the success of the project. Now, as we go to the South Campus, we will be working with Whiting Turner to develop the, the campus over, over the next five or six years, and we can go building by building, area by area, and we'll keep the same, we'll obviously maximize the efficiency of their efforts or design efforts, their construction efforts, and also, most importantly, keep the continuity of the architectural vision that they have laid out. Part of the process was not, we were awarding a SEATAC contract, but the first task on that was going to be the Centrum building, and that is the building that connects all the other buildings as, as we've spoken about before. So that was the first task that they were to provide a proposal on. However, as part of that proposal, we asked them to do an overall campus vision. So although they were just contracted for the Centrum, we wanted to make sure that they had a vision for how the rest of the campus would end up. And, and this is, this is their own vision, and we just wanted to make sure that they were keeping in mind how this one Centrum, Task Order One, would eventually grow into the entire campus. So our approach is going to be, right now, we're going to have the Centrum building, which is the only part of the project that is under contract with Whiting Turner. These other phases will be going to their group for proposals and contracting. So we see we're, we're likely to have three submissions to the commission. We have the Centrum building, which we're here for today. Then we have two other buildings on site that have some facades that will be upgraded, and you'll see some renderings that the design-build team has put together. They may change a bit from there. And then the final submission is the site work. Again, as we construct the buildings, we need the lay-down area, and as we build and construct the facilities, we'll back out, scrape up the asphalt, plant grass, and do the landscaping, and back out of the site. So the next slide gives you a little idea of how that sequence will come into play. So that's the exist, the final layout of the campus. The first section, obviously, is the North Campus, as Bobby alluded to, is the parking garage of VCC and the VIS. Task Order One with Whiting Turner, and the reason we're here today is to go over the architectural vision of the Centrum. That includes the demolition of an existing building and construction of the building you see there. Again, the intent is to connect all the buildings. The next phase we see is, is the facades of the two buildings that were just colored. The large one is Erskine, the smaller one is Robidoux. So we're going to be upgrading the facades of those structures. And then lastly, as far as structures go, Maury Hall, which will receive some interior upgrades. Some of the facades work, we, we'll likely end up in some cladding. We'll have to see how the other buildings impacted, but that will also be incorporated into the architectural vision. And then lastly, the greening of the site and the landscaping. So with that, I just want to explain how we got to the contracting effort, and for now, the main purpose we're here. I'd like to introduce Bill Baxley with the Whiting Turner Design Bill Team, and he'll go over the vision.
Thank you to the commission. Again, I'm Bill Baxley. I'm the Director of Design for LEOA Daily, and, or the design lead with the URS Whiting Turner team. And I'm pleased to be here today to share a little bit about some of our thinking and the vision for the, for the South Campus. I think it's wonderful that the project was centered around the Centrum, but the foresight to also include with that proposal the ability to context that singular project with a vision for the rest of the campus so that, because in a certain sense, starting with the middle before you do the perimeter is a little odd, but I think providing that framework and that context enabled us to kind of wrap our head around some ideas here in a different We took, you know, so where do you start with this? Obviously, they, there'd been some bridging documents and some other designs that had been put forward, and we did a lot of studying the site. And one of the interesting things that we understood right away is the, what we're calling a sort of threshold nature of this site. It really lies on the edge of the residential neighborhood, sort of one foot in that, and one foot in the historic park, kind of bounded between the, the Potomac and Sangamo Road. And the idea of threshold and its sort of perosity of transitioning from one environment to the other is something that we found fascinating and wanted to sort of celebrate with our, our new design. As John and Bobby had mentioned, I think the challenge was, in the brief, there was some iconography and some sort of presence, as this is a, a federal facility. And it was presented earlier as a, a sort of a singular object. This was a way of looking at the building, hey, we'll sort of graft all those together in a singular identifiable structure. So the building as object, something to be viewed at, and then maybe drop some courtyards in, was the sort of context of the original solution. And we, understanding the site, the neighborhood, the history as a campus, we postulated that we think we can reposition this program in a way to satisfy the connectivity that the owner desired, still create an iconic structure, but do it in a way that celebrates campus as a collection of buildings, really as a continuous field of habitable space that involves not only exterior but interior environments in a way that is much more about singular pieces in their environment rather than a singular large structure. Part of that was also understanding the sort of scale and components of those pieces as it related to what existing context that wasn't there, that wasn't, that was there, that wasn't residential. So we took that program and bent it around, folded it into a shape that really becomes a connector, a periscope, if you will, from the Potomac through the site with the window then back to the residential neighborhood. In this way, we can articulate the nature of the singular buildings, provide a unifying first step, and then look at how the rest of those structures can be in dialogue with that to create a singular presence to satisfy the issue of iconography. So the existing campus, as you've seen and, and understood before, and then our idea then would be to sort of reposition that. One of the early things we looked at was the original topography had a fairly significant draw that made its way through the site before there was any construction there. And the idea of pulling that landscape through the site and repositioning it along Sangamo Road to provide a layer of buffer and filter before we register the buildings, we thought would allow the neighborhood to encounter this in a more filtered way that brought back some of that original landscape. So there's a quick view of how those buildings and components go together. We are singularly cladding it in a, three types of materials, some aluminum panels, some slate, and some glass. And you can see the idea of the landscape sort of pulling through and re-registering itself along Sangamo Road. Part of that, a part of that context, it was important for us to identify really what these conceptual landscape environments would be, both from a maintenance standpoint, but also, do we have an opportunity here to take a significant issue, the issue of stormwater and its processing, and, and, and celebrate that in a natural landscape that contacts the buildings in a less formal way, of sort of a less rigor in terms of organizing trees that we thought is in more keeping with the classic campus structure. So we've got the context to deal with. We've got a series of assembly courtyards, perennial gardens, lowland, highland plantings, again, in a much more organic, less formal fashion for the site. And again, the, so the landscape forms this continual field of habitable space that the building engages. The landscape also informs the sort of nature of the skin of the building itself, and the ever-present parkland towards the Potomac begins to provide a framework for the ordering of the facade of the building in a way that hopes to stitch landscape and building together in a compelling, compelling way. So I'm going to just take a tour around the building, looking at some images of that so you get a sense of the sort of massing, scale, presence, and materiality of the structure. So this is the view from Sangamo Road. You can see the large structure, which is Erskine Hall. We sort of reskinned in the shell, provided some outdoor patios on the roof level, a lot more glass on that one side. The solid face that you see there is the end of Robidoux Hall. You know, we've got some ATFP issues that required a pretty hardened surface there on that Sangamo Road position. But when you look at the context, it's sort of open to solid, to a little aperture there on the end of the Centrum, you know, I think there's a, there's a balance there of surface and, and aperture that we feel is appropriate and also allows us to satisfy our ATFP components. Again, this is a closer view off of Sangamo. This is the end of the Centrum project that you're seeing there. The Centrum is full of a lot of sort of skift hardened spaces, but the places that can have those clear glass apertures to the neighborhood, we want to present that as a sort of an active facade, one that we could exhibit some activity behind. You're seeing the frame of Robidoux there, and then the setting of this landscape, which we are re-manipulating the topography in a way to begin a series of stormwater processing areas as it makes its way back down to the river. This is a, as a visitor, you'd be coming from the check-in visitors' building. Again, it's presented in a, a base of slate that sort of grows out of the landscape. This is slate from Virginia. It's a Grayson slate. You can see the sort of tree-like pattern of the building on top. Again, it's sort of a humble structure here. It has some presence, but it's not over-present on the site. This is the juncture between the existing Erskine Hall and Robidoux. And we talked about the idea of threshold. This space, this sort of aperture between the buildings here, which is now occupied by Abert Hall, a big sort of massive windowless brick building, by removing that structure, we provide a permeability that allows the neighborhood to look through the building back to the park. The buildings are still connected, but allows a transparency there and an accessibility that we think is, is important. And then on the park side, this is the other end of the periscope that looks into the, into the trees towards the Potomac. We've got active spaces there that can participate in, in outdoor porch. We're looking over a green roof that can do some work for us but also be experienced visually, as opposed to just being on the top of the building that we can't understand. And then this courtyard space, which we've created in the absence of, of Abert Hall in the center. And so this becomes an important sort of communal area, but also is the window, as you can see, back to the community. It provides a wonderful outdoor space for use during the day. It could also be set up as a space for graduations. We do have certain programmatic pieces here that would require this. We do have certain programmatic pieces here that would require this. And this room then, which faces the Potomac, its, its fourth edge, if you will, is the trees of the, of the park, can become quite engaging. I think with that, I'll turn it back over to, to John. Thank you.
So obviously, we're here on the architectural vision piece, but certainly wanted to take a second to address the stormwater management and the active activities we have that we're involved in on the campus. This slide visually identifies four tasks, and I'll hit them on the next slide to specifically identify them. The blue arrows, if I can find my mouse, there we go. This is the off, the channels that take stormwater that isn't detained or on-site down to the CNO Canal or the Potomac. We are doing some channel studies to identify the status of these channels. Some of that has been done previously through some previous studies and based on some MDE input and so forth, and also the previous owner, BRAC, or part of the BRAC process, he asked us to look into those channels as well. So that is one active task, we're doing an analysis there. Of course, the North Campus is a permitted project through MDE. The next, the, the third task we're working on obviously is the Centrum and the MDE permit requirements that are associated with that structure. As Bill said, we have a green roof, we're obviously taking up some impervious area and greening back some of the space where we have some bio ponds, and we also will be developing a rain harvesting system that will be used within the building, which is also one of the commitment, items in the commitment letter from Mr. Mansum into the community. And then lastly, is an overarching stormwater management strategy. We had this done at the concept stage when we first decided to redevelop the site. We had a general framework of how it could be accomplished. Now that we have a design build contractor onboard that will be taking us through to the fruition of the project, we wanted to blow the dust off that plan concept and go to a master concept of all the stormwater, because as we're building in phases, we need to make sure that all the buildings and all the efforts fit into the long-term stormwater management plan. So this next slide just goes over the same items I just spoke about in a narrative. North Campus has the permit, the South Campus, we're working with the Centrum, the overall campus design. We are getting that framework together to ensure that we, each phase as we develop it, keeps within that strategy. And last is the off-campus channel studies that we are being, analyzing those studies and working with the Park Service as well to go over those issues as a, as our neighbor and stakeholder. We also are, let me hit the next slide here. Lastly, this is a, an over, just an overview, no sense going through each and every one, but this is an overview of all the interaction we've had with, with stakeholders, with BRAC and MDE and the community, of course. We've, we've got a, an MOU with DNR for, for, we have a, an approved forest conservation plan in place, and over and above that, we, the owner has signed an MOU with the Department of Natural Resources in regards to reforestation and, and forest conservation. And that just gives a general overview of all of our coordination. So I'd like to hand it back to Bobby for closing and questions.
One of the things, one of the items I didn't include during my introduction is, I am a, I'm a civil engineer, but I'm, my background in engineering is stormwater management. So being on this project has given me the opportunity to be personally involved in the stormwater management discussions. Like I said, I do meet with the community when I can. I do get involved with the conversations we are having with NPS, where the downstream property owner impacted by some of the historic discharge from the site. Stormwater management is a serious issue for us, and we are taking it seriously, we are concerned about it. And one of the challenges that we do see, we have seen in the past, is the community doesn't have access to the designer. I'm not the designer for the project, and we did have the opportunity last June to have Clark, stormwater management engineer, meet with the community. And while that's something we would like to do, we hope, we plan to do, before we come back in later this spring to present this plan again, to have a stormwater management committee, the community that's concerned with this, have an opportunity to talk directly to the designer. That's not always the case, but my presence on site, I think, helps me manage that communication, answer the questions of the, the community on this, this important topic, and allow the positive communication and the engagement to proceed. Another item that's on here is, we will, again, NPS being a downstream property owner, we have been working with them, it does take time to complete the studies, but the outfall channel study that John discussed, we will be meeting with NPS on the 21st of March to discuss that study, to, to discuss NPS's, their, their feelings on the methodology used in that study and the general findings of the study. And what we hope to come out of that meeting, the, the product out of that meeting will be a position, an NPS position, because we're working with two parks here, the George Washington Memorial Parkway and the CNO Canal. We hope to receive a position from NPS so we can go back and work within the federal government and identify the, the way forward. It's a challenging issue on our part, because I'm, I work for DIA, DIA is not the property owner, they're the executive agent on behalf of DNI. Army was the former property owner, however, NGA was the operator of the property. So we have four federal agencies working in this, five including NPS, to, to come to a solution on this, and it, we are working at it. It is a process that takes time, but it's something we are, are serious about, and our next step on that is a, a meeting with NPS on the 21st of March. With that, that concludes the, our formal presentation. As I opened with, we are here to receive your insight and impressions of what we're doing to date and the architectural vision, so that when we come back in, back here later this spring, we, we have addressed your concerns adequately.
Thank you very much, very good presentation, and your community outreach is commendable. Do we, Mr. May?
Thank you very much. Not surprisingly, I do have a couple of questions or comments. The first is, I understand that back in September, there was, there was a consensus, I guess, that, that some sort of memorandum of agreement would be necessary, helpful, to be able to move the process forward between NPS and, I guess, Corps of Engineers, I'm not sure, who else? Can you tell me the status of that?
The MOA has not been signed. We have provided-
It's not even been seen.
It hasn't been drafted. Yes, sir. It hasn't been drafted. We have the steps to get to that MOA, I discussed with Ben Helwig, he's the point of contact for Park Service.
Right.
At the time, we were working on, we were awaiting a permit for North Campus, a stormwater management permit for North Campus, that was issued by MDE in January. We've provided that documentation to Ben Helwig, so he can share that with the, the parks involved. And we've provided him the outfall channel study. And what's important, and I, Ben and I had discussed this, what's important is for, I think for us all to understand the issues at hand before we draft and sign an MOA. It does us little good to have an MOA if it doesn't address the, the topics at hand. We are, we do communicate regularly, I do communicate regularly with Ben, we've shared the documentation with him. So we are working towards that MOA, and, and we hope to have that completed in the spring, and the, the next step, the, an important step in getting to that point, is this meeting on the 21st of March.
Okay, well, I'm not sure we would agree that you can't have an MOA until you've figured out all the things that you're going to do. I mean, I think part of what we're looking for is perhaps more general commitments, but also establishment of what the process will be, because there've been a few surprises as this, and I'm not going back all the way to the beginning history of when we were very surprised by what was going on, but the, even in the intermediate history, and even the fact of the outfall study was a bit of a surprise to many people involved, and so, or the timing of it, I guess, maybe. So having that MOA, I think, would be a very important step in, in building confidence in what we are doing. We're, we're not only trying to address your needs for the property, but our needs for the affected property, and then, of course, the concerns of the neighboring community. So I, I have to admit, I'm not terrifically encouraged by what you have to say about the MOA, and I would just urge you to move that forward to the front of the, of your tasks to be accomplished, again, because it, it builds confidence in what you were, what you're doing. And certainly, before we start to see anything for approval, we're going to want to know that that MOA is, if not actually in place, certainly well on its way, so we know what's going to happen. I will say, you know, I do appreciate all the work that has been done by the Corps of Engineers in advancing this, and of course, all of the other agencies involved, since it's many agencies that have some part in this. And we are still very grateful for Mr. Mansum's, in, in particular, his commitments to address stream restoration. And I just want to make sure that we, that that commitment remains intact, that you will continue to work with us to make sure that all of the, the impacts from the many years of, of unmanaged runoff are addressed in the affected parkland.
Yes, sir.
Well, expect us to want to know a lot more about that as we move forward. I know you have been communicating with Ben, and he's been very involved in it, but like I said, we, until things actually start to happen, or until we have something in, in the MOA, there's always a bit of nervousness that somehow the beautiful new buildings will get built, and the impacts from so many years of, of unmanaged runoff will not have been addressed.
Yes, sir. We will make up, make that MOA, it is a priority for us, and we will ensure that we make sufficient progress on it. MOAs, you understand, they, they take time, it may not be signed.
I know.
It may not be signed, but we will have a draft. We will have had the meetings with the Park Service, we will have a draft prior to returning here to present the concept.
Okay, well, as much as can be done to move it along would be greatly appreciated. I mean, these things can get slowed down our, our side as well, all the more reason to start working on them early.
So I have a question, a process question. This is information only, right? Has CFA seen this yet at all? I mean, because I'm always jumping on everybody's case about being, we're a planning agency and we're not design review, you know, architectural design review. Of course, I can't restrain myself if you're going to ask me. Is that what you're asking for?
I can answer that question, Commissioner May. Commissioner May is correct, CFA doesn't have review authority as this is outside the district. However-
Oh, right.
-noting that this commission is a planning agency and does give the commission some deference in terms of the, in terms of fine architectural detail, I discussed the idea of doing an informal design consultation with CFA staff and the applicant, thought that was a great idea, so we're in the process of scheduling that. And I've talked to CFA staff, and they're more than happy to provide architectural guidance. So we're in the process of setting up that meeting.
So does that, what, so, 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 so what are you, are we supposed to talk about the architecture?
That's what the applicant, the applicant is here to solicit your advice on the architectural concept.
Okay. All righty. Okay, well, then I have some comments and questions.
And just to follow up what Shane said, we are here, we do want to hear your opinions now, because it is easier for us to address them at this stage of the design than if we were to hear them later this spring. It becomes more challenging for us, so yes.
Okay. So I'm going to surprise you a little, based on my, my own history with this project, and again, say, there's a lot to like here. But I have a couple of suggestions. So should I start with the good stuff? I think that, that the materiality is really- very sensitive and imaginative. I really do, wow. I, I, I think there's some problems, as far as I can tell, with the massing. I get what you're trying to do with the Centrum, the big idea is a good one, I think. I'm a little unclear about, I'm a little unclear about, like, is out, is Abert Hall being resk, where does Abert Hall fit into this?
Abert Hall is in the center.
Abert Hall is right here.
So it's, so the Centrum is going to do what with it?
Abert Hall is going to be demolished, and the Centrum-
Oh, you're demolishing it altogether? Okay, I missed that part.
And the Centrum will join the-
Okay, then that makes sense. And so, and so Robidoux looks smaller. Are you demolishing or reskinning? So what are you doing? Just chopping off some, uh, none of it?
No.
It doesn't, it just doesn't, the proportions look a little off to me. But anyway, so I would say that, that, yeah, let's stop there. So, so Robert, what's inside Robidoux?
Robidoux will be office space. It will essentially be the building that houses-
Okay.
-our intelligence university.
So there's no auditorium or anything that would preclude the, the punctuation of that wall? And the reason I, that, that center mass, the Robidoux, and the reason I ask is because this is eastern light by, I'm figuring, right? So, so that makes a lot of sense to open it up a little bit. It looks to me like you go from, it's just an odd progression from Erskine, and then, you know, we've got a moot wall on Robidoux, and then you've got this little kind of, I think the, what did you call this thing? This mass at the end, you had a name for it? Of the Centrum? It's like a, you called it a telescope or something?
It's a periscope.
Periscope?
Right.
Periscope? Up?
Yeah.
Down?
Yeah.
It seems a little, the, the, the massing seems a, a little odd, and maybe it's not, when you're looking, can we go back to the, to, yeah? It, it just seems a, a little odd to me, and maybe it's, and maybe there's something that can be done to break up the, maybe it's not a matter of the, of the proportions, and it's a matter of fenestration or punctuating that middle block. I, I don't know.
It's, it's a great, thank you for those observations. I think, you know, we're, that facade of Robidoux, we are awfully close to our, we're within kind of a ATFP setback requirement, so it will, it has to be kind of a very hardened sur, not to say we couldn't put windows in there for sure, but how you do them sort of scales up quite substantially, as I'm sure you're aware. And the, you know, the issue, it's hard to look at this thing sort of as elevations in a way, because that sort of face is, is fairly paper-thin.
Yeah.
And so as you move around it, you have face and then opening, and so, you know, and Erskine is taking that idea and sort of turning it in a different way, and so we're trying to balance where we need that sort of surface with openings.
But it is a big honkin' blank wall from Sangamo, and most people, that's all they're going to see.
Right.
So just, that's just a comment. And then, can you show the other side of the courtyard? I just had a question, keep that one. The, the northern, what I think is the northern wall, it's much thicker?
This one here?
Yeah, what's going on there?
And actually, we, we have progressed a little with the design here. So we, we have, in this portion of the building, some stairs that actually exist right in here.
Okay.
And so what we've done, because I think the, the sort of thickness of the frame, it's important for that to be consistent. And so what we've done, you see how we've got this back layer of structure and thing that supports this porch? We've actually pulled, kept the, the frame of that consistent, whoops, and taken that, whoops, and taken that space and set it back, so there's sort of a frame within a frame. So we have a consistency with the metal.
Okay.
And then there's an inner frame of that other material.
I noticed.
It's a little awkward.
I noticed. Yeah, it's a little awkward the way we're looking at it now. And then I have just one other question. It's about the landscape, which I know we're not looking at now, right? We look at that last?
Correct.
As a, so there's time to change that? It seems really fussy to me, still. I mean, that, can you show that, that perspective on the, you know, you've got this kind of faux serpentine little entrance, and like, we're all, we're driving into, you know, a bucolic landscape, when really we're coming into a level five security. bucolic landscape, when really we're coming into a level-five security. It just seems a little, no, not this one. The one that, with the, with, uh, there you go.
And you're referring to, yeah, this, you know, this alignment, you know, that's part of the, the, the south, north campus, because hitting this crosspoint in terms of traffic management was really important.
Right.
And it gives some queuing areas. But a point well taken, that it's-
It's, it's trying a bit hard, I think.
I would agree.
And I don't know, I, I'm, okay, and I was gonna refrain from this, but I can't help myself.
Well, at one point earlier, we tasked them, we took them to task for taking down too many trees, and now we're fussing that they're putting trees up.
No, no, I'm just, it's the, it's the, it's, it's, not that there are too many trees, it just feels a little, it feels sort of inconsistent to have this kind of serpentine drive and approach to a big security pavilion. And I just wanna say one thing about the garage. I don't really get why it has, there, it doesn't seem that the garage has anything to do with the rest of the complex. And, and maybe it's just a grace note or two that you can think about in terms of materiality there. I don't know. I mean, I, okay, I'm finished.
Thank you. I think that's, you know, we've, we've tried really hard in this rendering to sort of mush that into the trees. It's gonna have a presence there, and I think-
Oh, we know, yeah.
-having some dialogue with the rest of the campus is important. And what that is yet, we haven't figured out.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And that is something we have discussed with, with the property owner. Clark Construction did the north campus, Whitey Turner's doing the south campus. And one thing we will look at as we move to the final site work for the campus is looking at providing finishes on those north campus structures, the VCC, the VIS, and even the garage, to make a consistent architectural feel for the campus. That is one of the primary objectives, because when you look at the campus, you know, forty-six, sixty-two, sixty-three, eighty-eight, a wide range of brick architecture on the campus. So one of our goals, in addition to the ATFP, meeting ATFP requirements, is to provide a common architectural theme for the campus. So while this rendering doesn't show it, it's something we have discussed, and it's something we do intend on addressing prior to the overall completion of the program.
I think the outdoor rooms that you're making are really lovely, and I would encourage you to think about the, when you get to designing the landscape for the courtyards, if you will. These are real courts, not parking lots. We like that, to be consistent.
Thank you.
Thank you. It's, it's, I think you've got, you've got a really great start, and, and that's hard for me to say, 'cause I've had a real gripe with this campus. So go get 'em.
Thank you.
And the last word goes to Mr. Proventia.
Thank you. To echo the words of Commissioner Wright, a lot, a lot to like, many positive aspects. Let me intersperse my comments with some of the positives, some of the questions. The architectural vision, I think the consistency that you're attempting to get with both the north and the south campus is somewhat eroded, because the, the north campus garage is, has a green screen, and that green screen is not replicated in any way on the south campus, just an observation. One of the concerns that we identified early on was signalization along Sangamo. The county seemed to be resistant to putting up signals, and so you're trying to move thousands of folks in and out at four-way stops. Any progress in that area?
We've, we've continued to discuss that concern with the community at the traffic committee meetings, and the community does not want the, a signal at their location. They're happy with the stop sign. As has been indicated us, I mean, we will bring it up with them again, raise that concern.
Did you say the community as opposed to the county?
Right, the community. I mean, we've met with the community at the traffic committee meetings, and the community members there, the discussions we've had have indicated that there's a desire to maintain that four-way stop.
Sometimes we need to learn the, the hard way, through, through experience, trial and error.
There are, there are members of the Montgomery County Department of Transportation who attend that meeting, and I'll follow up on that topic with them, sir.
I commend you on your willingness to address and correct past damages, particularly erosion with these outfall channels that have been incurred by previous occupants of the site. So many positive features still pursuing lead silver, or do you have a waiver to perhaps go to a higher certification?
Lead silver, sir.
Okay. The courtyard, I thought that was an innovative use of that for functions, graduations, and others. It's nice to have a multi-use outdoor assembly area, complements also on the green roof. That was primarily on which building, the green roof?
That is with the Centrum project.
Central? Okay, all right. Just on the, on the phasing, as we would normally see submittal of prime, preliminary site in-building, followed by final site in-building, but because of the acquisition phasing, are we gonna see preliminary and final, for example, on the Centrum, then a preliminary final on Robredo, Maury, and Erskine, and then a preliminary final on site? Is that kind of the general?
Yes, sir. However, with, yes, sir. However, with Erskine and Robredo Hall, you'll see a submittal for the two of them. We're approaching those structures from the outside in. So there will be one task order to provide the facade upgrades. So you'll see those two buildings together, and then we'll follow on with the interior renovation. So the three submittals, you'll see Centrum-
Right.
The facades of Robredo and Erskine, and the third one will be the final site work.
Gotcha. Okay. General timeline, I've heard you mention a couple times, spring, is it, can you define that any, anymore? Are we gonna see?
May, sir.
May? Okay, good. All right. ATFP was mentioned a couple of times, particularly on the cladding along the south end of Robredo. Are we talking UFC Unified Facility criteria, or the most recent Secretary's decision to go with the interagency, the ISC?
Proceeding with UFC low, sir.
UFC. Is that also because, just of where we are, we're already under award and in progress, so it's too late, if you will, to turn back and go to a, quote, cheaper, lower standard, perhaps, as a value engineering?
The UFC is essentially the value engineering standard, sir. There are, we could provide additional levels of protection on the site, but the direction given by Mr. Mansman in consultation with OD and I is that this will be a UFC low.
UFC, UFC light? Okay.
UFC low for the campus.
All right. I was intrigued with your perception about window design. I think the graphic that was shown looked like quaking aspens or poplars that are reflected in the window fenestration, but the site doesn't have aspen and poplars. It's a whole different.
I have to apologize. I'm from Minnesota, and so those are birch trees, and it's the pattern of the trees. It's a good, good comment. Thank you.
Innovative use of the periscope, too. We, when we normally think of periscope, we think of something that provides vision, but with angled mirrors, but clearly, it's not intended to be able to see from the canal with a series of smoke and mirrors out through the, and the creation of the aperture, I think, that was creative, trying to replicate on one end of the periscope on a different scale what you see on the south end of Erskine. I'd like to support the comments of Commissioner May about the MOA. Would highly encourage you to put full steam ahead on, on that particular issue. Perhaps submit early drafts to the Park Service, so that that, that can be accelerated. And last comment was about the communication. There was multiple examples of how, starting in the, what was the timeframe for the meetings?
We met in August.
October 11, I think, is when the committee, the commission gave, I think, pretty pointed feedback that, about engaging with the local agencies, as well as the homeowners association. That was a lesson learned, that we at DOD had a positive experience through the BRAC advisory group that City of Alexandria formed, with more than a dozen homeowners associations around the Mark Center site, as well as the Foxcroft Homeowners Association, that are neighbors to the demolition site for the Navy Annex. The outreach to the community was absolutely essential and profitable to all, it can't resolve 100% of the problem, but you at least have a forum that you can come in and address and raise issues. So thank you again. A lot to like.
Thank you very much. Anything else? Mr. Sox, you have anything?
Nothing.
Good. So a short agenda, but a lot of substance on today's agenda, so thank you all very much, and we are adjourned.